Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home in guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Dilworth-Glynn and Felton School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they're not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should use the upper left-hand thumbs up or give me a wave and I will acknowledge you and ask you to unmute and speak. All votes tonight will be conducted by roll call, so Amy, our clerk, can get a good recording of everybody's vote. Please wait until your name is called before voting. Also, for members of the public that are going to be watching this, we will be recording this meeting and access to this recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Thank you. Um, let's head over to the agenda. Since we don't, none of us have flags, we're going to stop the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and we'll say, you know, everybody stay safe, say well. Let's do a roll call. I see Amy's here, Ronnie's here, Laura's here, Sandy, Raleigh and David, and myself, and Superintendent Tegiston and John Jacobson, our IT Technology Director is also with us. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Sandy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Okay, I'm gonna go to roll call order to approve this. Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Laura? Hi Laura. Hi Sandy?
Aye.
David? David, are you good? Are you an aye on the agenda?
David's frozen.
David's frozen. Raleigh, are you an aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'm an aye. David, I'm assuming is an aye. Oh, there you are. Aye, David's an aye as well. Great. Um, we don't, we didn't have any public comments that were emailed into the school. Anybody have any rebel recognition that you would like to share? David? David gave me a thumbs up. Did you have some rebel recognition, David?
I just didn't know if you could hear me.
Yep, we can hear. Oh, there you are. Hi. He's back. Anybody have any rebel recognition you'd like to share?
I guess I kinda do for the seniors. We had that night when they turned on the football field lights and we showed up. There was quite a few seniors out there. We brought a couple of fire trucks over. The Glynn and PV showed up. We had all our lights going, so it was a good night for the seniors, not as good as what could have been for the year, but I think they're handling it as good as can be expected.
Yeah. I agree with you having a senior, Raleigh and I having a senior. This is definitely not how we wanted to see this end for them, but they're a good bunch of kids and you know, this is not the last memory they'll ever have. So Ronnie, did you have something? I see you raised your hand there.
I know this is my weakness. I never do, but I just wanted to give a shout out to all our admin team and all the rest of the staff, all the way down for the excellent job they've done on this. And I just haven't really felt a lot of pressure at all because they've been handling everything. So I really want to say thank you to the whole school district, so.
I agree. I agree. I think we all can agree how tremendous everybody has done coming together to provide our students with distance learning and the staff being flexible. As we know, government regulations continue to change day by day. I think Brian probably opens his email every day and it's something different. So, um, since we're moving on with that, let's go to 6.1, our technology report. So we're gonna hand that over to you, John.
Okay, this is gonna be super quick. Just kinda like what Ronnie had mentioned, super appreciative of staff and students. Everyone has got this can-do attitude. The reality is everyone's been busy the last couple of weeks. Just been crazy busy, but on a technical, you know, front, we just keep plugging away, you know, on the tickets and working, you know, through the processes. So I, it's been super appreciative of everyone, you know, helping out, you know, on that front. A couple of local companies working between Arvig and Midco, they have been phenomenal to work with. The handful of students and families that haven't had any internet service, they've really stepped out of the plate big time to provide, you know, free internet service for those families. Local services and products have been working good. We did have a hiccup with Schoology, the LMS solutions we used at our high school and middle school, but the last few student days, what I've heard, those tasks have been working more efficiently. So I'm hoping to get some more details on that. I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning. But other than that, I just, I wanna make myself available for if you guys, if you had any questions or thoughts for me. Again, I wanna keep this super short and sweet as we just continually send updates through emails and the ticket system.
I guess, have you been having a lot of issues with the kids not being able to get on the internet when their class times are, or has it been pretty good feedback?
You know, it's, considering we got about 1,600 kids on a number-wise, we've been pretty good on that. I don't think if we have issues, if there's connection issues, I don't think it's really a technical issue. It's more just people not checking in. I don't want to attend a class or I don't want to attend a session. So we found creative ways, working with counselors, even sometimes individual, you know, teachers on what can we do to reach out to those families? Why are you not able to connect or attend, you know, a particular session? So we did have a handful of families that weren't, they lived in an area that maybe wasn't called like a rural area that didn't have the Arvig or Midcontinent free internet service, but we have been utilizing, the district has a handful of Verizon mobile jet packs. So we got them in circulation for those families. But it's still, it's still an ongoing process and I'm working with students on if they don't show up, why is that? And that's, that's gonna be ongoing, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for John? Nope, it looks good. Thank you so much, John.
Yeah.
All right, so 6.2, Board Committee Report. Let's see, we had a fiscal personnel last Thursday. Sandy or David? I'm gonna divert this to you guys. Which one wants to speak? Sandy's smart. David, you wanna give us an update on FNP?
Sure. Looks like Sandy may be frozen. So we met with some issues on payment regarding some vendors and we talked about some difference, particularly with regard to the busing scenario. And what are we gonna do exactly with them as far as their contract? We had three different options that were put together by Eileen and we reviewed those and we thought kind of the middle option looked to be the best option. I'm trying to think of the other issues that we talked about, Lindsay.
The CARES Act, do you wanna talk about that?
Well, yeah, one thing right now, and really probably a shout out goes to Jeannie just because what's happened with the enactment of the CARES Act and the Family First Response Coronavirus Act is that we've had just tremendous amount of legislation and interpretation regulations that are coming out, as well as executive orders that have come from the state of Minnesota. All have made it really difficult for anyone to try to figure out what they're gonna do with payroll, what we can do with regard to people asking for time off and kinda what that means for unemployment and the addition of the sick leave provisions, as well as expanded Family Medical Leave Act. So these have been really difficult for Jeannie to get a handle on. It's been difficult for me and my job to get a handle on. So it's a lot. She's working through that and I owe, I think Brian, some material on this to hopefully help out a little bit, give a little bit of guidance from some information that I've been able to find. So I think that's.
Yeah, I think that was, the only other thing we talked about is last week, I don't know if it was Wednesday or Thursday, the Minnesota Department of Health is requiring all caregivers taking care of essential workers' children at the school to be wearing a mask. So I know Roseanne on this, and I think our fax teacher, Brian, if I'm correct, were working diligently to make a bunch of masks for the staff in the building. So that came down last week and it was a very quick turnaround. So we thank them for their diligence, helping to get those masks made for the staff to take care of those essential workers' children. So I think that was it. I don't think there was anything else. Was there Sandy?
Just the only other thing that I had in there, and I'm sure Brian will probably be touching on that, was Brian just kind of touched briefly on the boundary alignment that he was talking about. And I suppose that'll probably be in your superintendent report or coming up sometime soon. And then as far as spring coaches, we talked about, we're just gonna wait and see what Minnesota State High School League and what the governor says about all that. So that was the only additional thing that I had down.
Yeah. Great, thanks Sandy. All right, let's move on to 6.3, Superintendent Reports. All yours, Brian.
You guys did great so far with this. It's been awesome to watch. My voice has gone halfway, so try to keep mine halfway short. If I start fading out, Lindsay, just give me the thumbs down that it's time for you to shut up.
Okay.
So, a few things, yeah, as far as the personnel fiscal meeting, we do have, there's some work that's been done. The admin team is, the whole admin cabinet has been just fantastic about leadership throughout this and working with all staff and trying to figure out what things people need to, you know. Big shout out to Tracy and Jake, in particular with the communication process, which has been just fantastic. You know, it seems to have been almost seamless. So I just have nothing but praise to say for everything everybody's been doing throughout this process. Couple of updates, been in communication with Clay County regarding our SRO services. And what is gonna happen, the county commissioners have made a decision that we will get reimbursed for our SRO time during all of this distance learning process. Because what has been happening, of course, is Jeff Lee has been reassigned during that process to help out. And, you know, I appreciate the stance that they've taken that we shouldn't be billed as a school district for that time. So even though he's helping out, it's been more of a county-wide process for the work he's been doing. So they're tracking all of this time and when we get done at the end of the year, we'll get reimbursed for these days. So I think that was a nice heads-up from them. I reviewed with the Fiscal Personnel Committee on the personnel hiring process. You notice that there is one addition to the agenda regarding special ed hiring. And what we've been working through, through our admin cabinet meetings is let's identify the things that are absolutely critical that must be done now. And there's, there's someone that will be, we'll wait and see based on what we're seeing with the numbers, of course, for fiscal '21, in particular with our elementary teaching staff. But the special ed positions in particular, we know those are, it isn't if we need them, we absolutely do need the position. So it's one of the reasons I wanted to review with that committee showing, okay, these are critical positions that we know we're gonna have to have. And I won't bring any positions forward to you unless we know that it, this isn't something that may be a need. These are automatic needs if they're gonna be brought forward. Food service, couple of good notes, good piece of information that we've received. The state has made approval for weekend backpack services through the summer food service program. So what that means is, and I think I talked about this two, three weeks ago, that we're looking into the possibility of if we're gonna be serving these and putting together these egg meals for on Fridays, why not look at the same way? It was a good test run over the Easter holiday weekend for the multiple meals. And so we're working through plans to actually be able to do this service for Fridays and the weekends for students also. So I think that is a huge plus. And then that will be reimbursed through the same process. Other note on food service, I think there is a huge need to do some communication to families, looking at how financial status has changed for families. Right now, we're considered a closed district when it comes to meals. And that's one of the reasons we have to go through the summer food service program. If a school district is over 50%, then you become, quote, "an open site" and it opens and it provides some more options. We know that the financial status of many families has changed during this time. So one of the tasks this week is to do a lot of communication and see if we can do some work with families to help them with some of these forms on the free and reduced. And even if it's just during this period, there's many families that probably now qualify for free or reduced meals. The higher the status of that as a district, the more federal help we can get for all the patrons of the district. So this is a good thing. And this isn't a moment to be too proud to apply and what else not. This is something that will be beneficial for everybody in the district. So we have to, we have to take a serious look at that and it's something I wanna have a discussion with the admin cabinet. Transportation compensation plans were discussed. I'm gonna be meeting, setting up a meeting with Eileen and Tracy tomorrow to review those plans. I know you all probably did the review at the Oversight Committee meeting on the playground project status and what else not. As you're well aware, I wasn't able to be at that meeting today. So I'm curious to hear if there was any other updates from the board members regarding the Oversight Committee meeting today. Otherwise, I will be having some discussions on that with the admin cabinet. And that is all I have at this point.
Thank you, Brian. Yes, sorry. Ronnie and I did attend the district oversight meeting today. Ronnie, do you have any specific things you'd like to share from that meeting today?
No, I thought it was really good meeting. And I think they say if we get all in order here next week, they're talking about maybe even putting out those drawings, which they did the internal stuff and some of the different colors and how they're doing it. And I think all you ladies said that you really liked what you were seeing as far as that and the principles too. So I know I'm gonna stay 100 miles away from any type of selecting colors and that thing, but I did like in the Dilworth site, if we don't stay with the same carpet tile, the one right below that, that had a little bit of vertical streaks in it. I kinda liked that one too. But that and then found out, you know, and Raleigh said as far as the drainage, I was worried about that. We did basically kinda agree to switch what we were doing for those shuttle buses and park them right on the west side of the theater instead of trying to run them around the loop and leave the loop only for the parents in the mornings to drop off. And I think that's a much better flow of traffic from what I can see. I don't know, what else, Lindsay?
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was the first time I'd actually seen the drawings. The last time I had called into the meeting and just listened. So it was very, very fun to see the progress that they've made on the drawings and how they're incorporating the colors of the brick on the outside to kinda make everything look just like it's always been there. Lots of natural light. They did go over colors on both sites. A little, little more pop of color in the elementary since it's more sensory and the K34 will be there. Some muted colors in the high school. You know, our colors of our school district being black, silver and white, it's kind of, well, it's kinda flat. Like the gal said when she was trying to put it up, put that kind of colors on a schematic drawing of it, it fell very flat. So she added some warm tones in there and I think it looks very nice. I think we'll continue to have discussions regarding that. But I think they are doing a phenomenal job and they're, they're very confident that towards the end of the month, while they're gonna be done with the DD process, that's the design development, and then they're hoping to have the design development process over to Comstock and hopefully start getting those early bid packages out. So hoping to do that. And then they did mention that the second time they were gonna go for bids was gonna be the end of July. They're kind of anticipating they'll be able to move that up a month and get going on that sooner. Was that correct, Ronnie?
Yeah, I think that's what they were saying and hoping for. And there was one change, Brian, too. They were talking about maybe getting rid of those bathrooms on the north end. Was that the first floor to Dilworth site and trying to do them this summer too? They thought, you know, it could change it into, since they gotta cut up the whole floor and everything already for that, you know, look at possibly doing that this summer instead. And then I think Wayne just kinda wanted to know too for sure when they were talking about demolishing the old shop and stuff, you know, and that was gonna be January type thing. So I think that covered most of it. I don't know, Sandy, were you in a part of it, but?
No, she wasn't able to get back in. Raleigh called in and he heard the discussion about the drainage and he was agreeable to that. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Raleigh?
Just, Brian, I don't know if you were here or not, but I was really happy to hear that that ditch was going away. That's all gone. And the only question I really had was whether or not there'd be enough slope to get out to the pond without lifting it. And they were still checking on that. Also, if they have to expand, they kinda looked at the overhead view and saw where the field ended. The agricultural fields ended and didn't know that we actually owned all the way up to the Cooley, that we had bought all of that. So they're different outlet. The outlet that's there, if they do extend Seventh all the way out, is probably in the way. And I told them if they're gonna extend it, they might as well make an L shape out of it and put the outlet on the other end. That would be out in the Cooley because we've got it. It's, they could take advantage of it now, not later. If we're gonna do it, let's do it now and get it done. So they kinda understood then.
Sounds great.
I think the only other thing to note is Lee was hoping, and he was gonna talk to you, Brian, about it. He was really hoping that you would be able to give him some insight for tentative confirmation for user group meetings. And that would be May 7th and 8th possibly. So he was gonna talk to you about that. But for our, whoop there, you're back, Brian. Did you hear about the Lee and the user group, the user group meetings he wants to do? Seventh and eighth possibly. He's gonna get ahold of you. He's gonna find out if it's feasible or not, but May 7th and 8th.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, just say how unbelievably happy I am with the professionalism of Lee and his crew and Jason and his crew at Comstock. They are just so willing to listen and rework and make sure that we're staying within budget. Jason did said, you know, said it's gonna be close. It's gonna be super, super close. So it'll be interesting to see where we get on these bid packages and how much work we can get done. It would be lovely if the governor would make up his mind what is gonna be happening for the remainder of the school year so these guys could get going or not. And I think they're trying to make the most of this and trying to adapt and adjust so they can get as much work done with the, you know, with the time that's being allowed. So kudos to them. I'm very, very happy with them.
Just a comment?
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead, Brian.
A comment on that and, and I, we will reemphasize, you're probably aware that he's extended, the governor has extended the stay-at-home order to the 15th. My concern, my hope is that we don't simply go to the 15th with the distance learning plan and do this two weeks by two weeks. I think that's gonna put that much more anxiety with staff and families regarding graduations and what else not. So I, you know, if you just even give me a thumbs up as far as emphasizing, whether it be the MSBA to everybody else, that if they are gonna extend distance learning, that I believe recommendation from everybody from greater Minnesota is do the distance learning through the rest of the school year. Don't do this two weeks by two weeks by two weeks thing because it makes it that much more difficult for everybody. Okay?
I agree. Ronnie, did you have something to add there?
Only other thing I was gonna say from that meeting today, Brian, was they, you know, we're gonna try to open up that northeast corner of the media center in Dilworth. And they're finding out they're gonna have to leave a fire door in there to have enough things. So they're still working on how to handle that, so.
Yeah.
So, make it this right, they extended it now till the 15th of May, the governor did?
Correct, this afternoon.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that yet.
Yeah, that was, and it's, tomorrow is when we have our, our conference call with the commissioner. So I'm assuming we're gonna be getting some updates sometime, you know, sometime tomorrow. But I'm, I'm sending some communication to the commissioner just to, you know, please don't do the two weeks by two weeks with the schools. It just doesn't, it's not helpful.
Well, if we did that, would, would or could graduation, because I am getting calls on that and I'm like, you know, I don't know. And I've got a senior. Nobody knows. We're at the mercy of Minneapolis-St. Paul.
Yeah, and I agree, I agree with you, Raleigh. It's frustrating for everybody and this is, closer we get to May, the higher the anxiety level is going to become for everyone. And it would be, I think, in everybody's benefit to be able to just say, look, the ceremony itself is gonna be delayed. We're gonna do a celebration. And I know it's gonna be one of our discussion points on Thursday with all of the Lakes Country Service Co-op superintendents. That's gonna be one of the lead ones that we'll have. So anything I receive from either Tuesday's meeting with, virtual meeting with the commissioner or the superintendent's meeting, I will update the board members. It may be one of those that we actually look to have another virtual meeting, a special meeting that we plan out to talk about what we could do with this. So if I get any information, I'll update you, all of you regarding it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, there's three of us on this meeting right now with seniors and we recognize what an important milestone this is for these We, we recognize what an important milestone this is for these kids and we want to celebrate them, our community wants to celebrate them, so. I think we just have to see how your meetings go, Brian, and then we'll move forward in a direction that we can to help uh. You know, bring these kids together and celebrate if it's not in May, you know, certainly soon after that, hopefully, so. Um, but I do recognize it is important, they need to have that finality of and moving on to the next chapter of their life, so. Alright, let's go on to seven point one, approval of the March, the March twenty-third, twenty twenty regular meeting. Do I have a uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, alright, we'll do a roll call vote here, Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie? Oh, he's giving me a thumbs up, Ronnie's aye, Laura?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Raleigh?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, um. Alright, so we have eight point uh, wa- uh, consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Can we get the bills?
Oh, yep, sorry.
Well, yeah, we need the amount.
We need the amount. My regular motion here.
The amount this time is one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
Alright, Amy, did you get that?
Got it.
Okay, now I'll take a motion. Wait a minute, we have some donations. Alright, backpedaling a little bit, thank you so much to the Felton Fire Department for the amount of five hundred dollars for post-prom. And the approve, uh, we're also have a donation from Casey's uh, for the amount of ten coupons for post-prom. So thank you to those businesses for supporting our kids, alright, now I'll take a motion.
You have a motion already, I'll second that.
Oh, who was the first motion? Ronnie was, okay, thank you Sandy, Ronnie and then Sandy, alright, a roll call here, Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries seven zero.
Question, Lindsay, what it's, uh, we're not having a post-prom, are we, or are we?
Um, well, I think that needs to be determined, uh, as well as graduation. I am, I I, this is just me speaking out loud in my opinion right now. If the governor has uh, put our, put in place uh, stay-at-home order till the fifteenth, prom was to be held the ninth. So I am assuming, Brian, that that will be a discussion with the admin committee tomorrow about prom. Um, I know some communities are talking about postponing and maybe having it this summer. Um, yeah, go ahead, Sandy.
Sorry, there is a post-prom meeting scheduled tomorrow night, same, same avenue as what we're doing tonight. But at uh, six o'clock tomorrow is post-prom, so I'm sure we'll get the directive from the admin council tomorrow. And then we'll be discussing that, yep, thumbs up.
Yeah, sounds, sounds good and I, you know, whatever recommendation that the post-prom parents come up with, how they wanna proceed. But um, you know, with the governor's order, I don't think we have much of a choice to postpone at this point, so. Um, uh, just stinks, what can we say? Alright, but we'll thank everybody for the donations and we'll keep it in the pot for whenever we have a celebration, so. Alright, we're gonna go to nine point one, this is equipment disposal, um, in the packet that was sent out. I think we're only approving one item and it was a special ed one. Sorry, I'm looking for my paper here and this was a disposal of a, a Dell tablet. The tablet is no longer in working condition, so we just need to approve that we can dispose of that, do I have a motion? Oh, my goodness, I had three, I think, or David first, so I'm gonna get.
Yep.
Uh, the motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Second by Sandy, okay, we're gonna do a roll call on this vote, Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
And myself, I, motion uh, carries seven zero. Uh, next action item nine point two, this is a certified contract, this is for Kelsey. Crow Termeier, I probably butchered that, I apologize, Kelsey, uh, this is our early childhood special education teacher. Um, she is a B eight, uh, plus ten, step six, and she will be beginning, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion? Oh, I think Laura, I'm gonna give it to Laura. And second, Amy? Amy will second, alright, a roll call vote here, Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Myself, I, motion carries seven zero, alright, our next board meeting will be held the same way. Um, virtual on Monday, April twenty-seventh at six PM, so we'll change that from the DGF High School Media Center, Amy. To virtual, um, uh, just gonna point out, I know it was sent out in an email or on the web somehow. That uh, members of our community can make comments for us to read, they can email um, the district office. And I believe John said that there's a link on the website for that now, am I correct, John?
You're correct.
Okay, perfect, so anybody that's wanting to make a comment, um, or have a question, um, certainly reach out. You know, I I just wanna point out to all the parents that might watch this, um, we know that this is stressful, we know that. We're not all teachers in our regular job, but we want to thank you for your commitment to your kids and to the school district. Um, you know, if you're having issues, reach out to your child's teacher or to their site administrator. Or to any one of our services if you need help and I wanna point out again, um, like most families, you have your kids at home now. And you're, they're going through mass amount of foods, at least mine are, um, if you want uh, lunch. Please contact the school and that will be provided for any student eighteen and under, it's not a free and reduce, it's any student eighteen and under. If you want lunches, please contact the food service department, does anybody have, oh, Ronnie's raising his hand.
Just a question, Brian, back on the food stuff there, how has it been of the rural people been coming in and picking it up? Or are we gonna have to look instead like some districts actually deliver to the rural people or what's the status of that?
Great question, Ronnie, and this, this is what goes hand in hand with uh, regarding the free and reduced. And the issue about if you're a closed site compared to an open site. Uh, there was a change as of April first regarding open and closed sites and reimbursement. So what was taking place was as long as you were going as a school district, if you were a closed site. Meaning you had less than fifty percent, um, if you're a closed site, you you are no longer reimbursed. As a closed site, if you go directly to their houses, unless you actually go through the paperwork process. If they do not qualify for free and reduce. This is one of the reasons of trying to make sure that we can become an open site, gives us more latitude in how we work with this. As long as what we're doing is delivering to locations such as just going to a drop-off. Location in Felton or, but if we actually go door to door to their houses, there's more restrictions. So again, this is just part of that, um, the nuances as far as what that we have to go through in food service. And that was a major part, piece of discussion that was done uh, with all of the area superintendents, so. There's, there's a lot of work that we have to just, uh, a lot of paperwork that we have to sift through on this, but. It's why we have decided to go to drop-off locations instead of going door to door.
Thank you.
Alright, so thank you all for joining, it's so good to see everybody's faces, I wish you all well. Um, so we will see each other again on Monday, April twenty-seventh, um, at six PM. Unless Brian hears, oh, Brian's gonna talk to us again here, unless Brian has an emergency meeting or virtual meeting that he needs us to ha- uh, have. And I will certainly, I hope it's been okay, um, just to, you know, text you guys each uh, to check your um. Emails, so we keep on top of this, go ahead, Brian.
As leadership of the board, you are all doing, uh, I I think a fantastic example. Of of leading by example with this, um, and I know Jake and I have talked about that before. And the importance of it and again, a shout out to Jake for all of his leadership to make sure that. He's working with us to get this set up, uh, just for some clarification, the meetings I have this week for communication. Uh, we've moved the uh, the Lakes Country Service, uh, the superintendent's meeting to tomorrow morning. They've added that one, which is great, so we'll have that tomorrow morning and I think that'll give us a lot of guidance. I'll be in communication with Wayne tomorrow and with Tracy tomorrow, uh, regarding both the post-prom and graduation. So that that information can get to the post-prom committee and then tomorrow at four thirty, I have the meeting with the the commissioner. And then we also have an updated one on Thursday, the admin cabinet meeting Thursday and Lakes Country again on Friday. So those are the meetings I have at the regional and state level this week.
Thanks, Brian, well, we'll look forward to hearing what you said, um, have to say with that. Alright, well, this is your DGF School Board signing off, we wanna wish everybody, um, your health and happiness, stay well. Wash your hands, cover your cough and we will see you guys soon, so goodbye, everybody.